Welcome to the November 21st meeting, the Murfreesboro City Council. I'm gonna handle our prayer and our pledge. Father, thank you for this night, this chance that we get to come together. Lord, I think we have lots of things to be thankful for. This time of year, we get to be thankful for our families, Lord, for our health, that we get to live in a good city with good people. Lord, I thank you for the people that we have that work in this city, not just our city employees, but we thank you for all the people here who provide services for our residents. Lord, as we go through this season, I wanna pray for those that, Lord, may need your help. Lord, that you give us the ability to be able to see the things that we need to see and the decisions that we need to make, but also you use compassion, and, Lord, to be able to show your light. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna, we have Stars Award. We have Officer Cameron Stamps, Officer Cormac Chandler, and Officer Nathan Corwin. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, we recognize Officer Nathan Corwin, Officer Cormac Chandler, and Officer Cameron Stamps, who wasn't able to attend this evening, as October's Star Awards recipients. As you know, the Stars Award recognizes those employees that go above and beyond in outstanding customer service. In August of 2019, these three officers went to the home of a last castes person in reference to a follow-up Officer Corwin had been working on. They made contact with the residents there and were granted consent to search the bedroom in the apartment. The search resulted in the location of ammunition, high-capacity magazines, and several firearms, which included an SKS rifle, which was stolen out of Lafayette County, Mississippi in 2016. They also found drug paraphernalia, scales, a pill bottle containing OxyContin tablets, two capsules containing brown powdery substance, a mason jar, and four bundles containing the same brown powdery substance. The substance was field-tested, showing positive for heroin, and weighed eight ounces. The suspect was taken into custody and charged accordingly. Through their teamwork and attention to detail, these officers were able to recover a stolen firearm, along with two other firearms and half a pound of heroin, which equates to approximately 1,700 individual doses. Captain Smith stated, "This is the epitome of good zone work." Thank you, Officer Corwin, Chandler, and Stamps, for your outstanding teamwork.
Nice. Officer, tell me what your daughter's name is?
Isabella.
Isabella. Thank you for coming to the council meeting. If I'd known I paid attention, I would've got you to do the prayer and the pledge tonight. So, thank you. I get to speak to a lot of students just about every week. It seems like I'm in every class, and I will say that it never changes that all of our students, when you ask them what they wanna be, they either wanna be a police officer or a firefighter. So, that says a lot, going, still going through, and you have the examples of what we have with our police officers. So, thank you for the job that you do. All those that are not here in the audience tonight, we appreciate you. We also have a City Schools Award that we, Dr. Gilbert is here, and she wants to present something to us.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good thing you run. That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much, Council, for letting us come. This is the exemplary school district banner, and we're presenting this to you tonight. We are one of 20 districts in the state that are exemplary school districts. There are three in Middle Tennessee, the others two being Williamson County and Wilson County. So, this basically is saying that we are doing what we need to do, in fact, more than what we need to do as far as achievement for our students, and so we're giving this to you for you to display in City Hall. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Dr. Gilbert, and I didn't mean to say that all of the students wanted to be police officers and firefighters, knowing that you're sitting there, so we'll get...
That's all right. They all had teachers at one time.
That's right. But we can get you a badge, and you can have that, too. So, all right, you have the consent agenda in front of you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. We've got a few things that have moved on our agenda, so we are going to move number nine down below number 17, so we'll have a 17B. And now, we'll move into ordinance 19047, the sanitary capacity allocation, resolution 19R26, sewer capacity allocation, water resources.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. Wanted to go over this, if I can get the, go over this proposed ordinance, draft ordinance, and associated resolution with you. I'm not gonna go through a lot of the details that I've gone through at workshops and different meetings, but I wanted to at least kinda go back through the timeline of when we started this discussion. So, in the slide before you, we first brought this up July 11th at a council workshop, kinda introduction. We then, staff made a site visit to Beaufort, Georgia, who had a allocation ordinance that we were modeling. We did bring it to the August 27th Water Resources Board, who recommended the ordinance for adoption. We did an update at council workshop on September 19th. We conducted a stakeholder meeting October 1st. We introduced it to the Planning Commission on October 16th, brought it to the November 6th Planning Commission, and they recommended adoption. And we did, I actually went to the Home Builders Association meeting yesterday morning and presented it to them, and so we're here tonight to request the adoption of ordinance 19047 and resolution 19R26. So, I've taken all of the pages, I don't know if there's seven, eight pages, and I've tried to boil this down to six bullets, so I'm calling this a high-level summary of it, I should say of ordinance. So, this ordinance links land-use classifications to zoning classifications and limits density of single-family units by said classifications due to sanitary sewer collection, infrastructure constraints. It does not allow densities in zoning where densi, it does not limit densities in zoning where density is deemed a higher economic benefit. That's the gateway design overlay, the central business district, and the city core overlay. It affords a process to petition for higher densities based on socio-economic benefit of the project, and it sets up sewer connection vesting rights up to 10 years by purchasing 10% of the connection fee costs in two-and-a-half-year increments. So, if you pay up to 40%, you get the full 10 years. So, it does allow for a 90-day exemption period for certain projects or three Planning Commission submittals. I think we have actually a hard date that we're going to recommend that the ordinance would go into effect if passed. So, these are for projects that have expended significant resources through approval processes at the city. And then it establishes an annual accounting process by which council can determine depleted capacity at our water resource recovery facility, and therefore properly plan for future growth within the city. So, I'm available for questions, but that is kind of as brief a summary as I can provide, but open for questions if you have any. Otherwise, I would recommend you approve it at first reading.
Any questions for Mr. Corwin?
Were there any changes at the Planning Commission level from what we've known from the past workshops and such?
It has not significantly changed, I don't believe. We had the grandfathering conditions at the Planning Commission approval. We had the zoning classification and the land-use classification linked together. We had the 90-day grandfathering clauses and, I think, and the vesting rights. So, we went through Planning Commission, everything you see today was basically presented to them.
And it, but I guess my point was, was that what was before, the last time we saw it from a council? Did it change at Planning Commission, so now there's something different than what we saw at the last council meeting?
The only thing I can say that changed was, Mr. Martin, we had a bi-annual accounting process. We were gonna update it every other year, and I think they requested that we update it every year.
Gotcha.
And one additional thing, and I'm just speaking to the ordinance itself, but there've been a couple of changes to the resolution, but to the ordinance itself, there had been some ambiguity as to whether, once someone, the sewer rights, sewer service rights get vested under state law, whether someone had to keep paying the fee to renew that, and that was not the intent, that once it's vested under state law, it doesn't have, they don't have to keep on paying that, that 2 and 1/2, that 10%. So, there was a, the end of section 33-83D, there was a sentence there that just adds clarification that once it's vested as a state right, there is not that continual requirement of paying 10% every two-and-a-half years.
I wanna thank staff before we consider the ordinance and the resolution. You know, I think what once started as, hey, I think we're gonna, a year ago, we're gonna look at something to see how this looks and compares to our land use, really turned into something a lot greater when we looked at where our capacity's going, who it's going to, and how much of it that we have left. And, you know, I think we all talk about, and watching the Planning Commission meetings, we talk a lot about smart growth. We talk about a lot of smart development. We talk about density a lot, and I think we've had more meaningful conversations over the last six months, going back to our council retreat, where we're really talking about how that we wanna see the city developed, not just from the inside out, but from the outside in, and that's really what this sewer capacity ordinance and resolution is gonna do. So, I think the staff for helping us and really opening up the dialogue and the conversation for us to see how the city's gonna be developed for the next 15 to 20 years.
We appreciate you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna add to that. I wanna compliment Darren, too, on the, from the standpoint of investing the time into the meetings that we had and in the community, especially the stakeholders that were involved, because that's never easy when you have to do that, and you're opening yourself up to a lot of criticism, but I think we did that the right way, and I think they responded very well, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good work. I'll move, we approve it.
All right, we have ordinance 19047 that we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider resolution 19R26, the sewer capacity allocation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you very much.
God, Darren.
Appreciate it.
It went so quickly.
All right, we have another change. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We did talk about versus a 90-day, I'm sorry, that was, we just kinda flew right through that. The effective date of the ordinance, of the ordinance in lieu of a 90-day, we thought it best to allow for three Planning Commission submittals, which would provide, allow for a hard effective date of April 15th, if that's acceptable to the council.
Is that in the resolution?
No, and that's what, that was something that Mr. Hollister, Mr. Gore, Mr. Blomley, and I started, it came to my attention today, but we think that the, that in section three of the ordinance where it says within 90 days, which would be section three, subsection three, four, and five, that instead of saying within 90 days, it says honor before April 15th, 2020. So, the approval by Planning Commission or administrative approval has to occur on or before April 15th, 2020. That allows for three Planning Commission submittal cycles.
Okay. 90 days would not.
90, just because of where the submittals, the effective date of this, if it's passed at the next council meeting on December 15th, probably would fall after the next submittal date, and so you basically, you have, you have two options, which would be either you shorten the effective date of, of, you know, instead of going and becoming effective 15 days after passage, which is normal practice, it, you would make that shorter, or you can extend the, the night, go to April 15th.
Do we need a separate motion to get it on April 15th?
I would, what I would do is say a motion to amend the resolution.
All right, so...
It's the resolution, not the ordinance?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just a motion to amend the resolution to replace the reference within 90 days.
To April 15th, 2020.
Yeah, to April 15th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, as Mr. Tucker has recommended.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have another change. We're gonna move, item 13 is gonna go, is gonna move to before 11, so the consulting contract for Front and Vine Street improvements, engineering. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a contract for transportation, engineering, and landscape architectural services for Front and Vine Street at its intersection with Broad Street. The design is included in the 2020 CIP. Staff requested proposal from Reagan Smith to provide the city with a planning document and a traffic study to assess the realignment of Front, Vine, at Front and Vine Street at Broad Street. They will also look at the need for signalization at that location as well. The primary funding source for the project will come from the 2020 CIP funding. I have a refunding resolution. It's included next in the council agenda in the event that this is passed and the CIP is funded through a bond issue. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have another change. We're gonna move, item 13 is gonna go, is gonna move to before 11, so the consulting contract for Front and Vine Street improvements, engineering. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a contract for transportation, engineering, and landscape architectural services for Front and Vine Street at its intersection with Broad Street. The design is included in the 2020 CIP. Staff requested proposal from Reagan Smith to provide the city with a planning document and a traffic study to assess the realignment of Front, Vine, at Front and Vine Street at Broad Street. They will also look at the need for signalization at that location as well. The primary funding source for the project will come from the 2020 CIP funding. I have a refunding resolution. It's included next in the council agenda in the event that this is passed and the CIP is funded through a bond issue. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to item, we're gonna go to item 13 now, and that's the consulting contract for Front and Vine Street improvements.
So, this is actually...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the...
Yeah, we need to, we need to, I'm all messed up now. We need the resolution for refunding Front and Vine Street improvements.
That's correct. Sorry.
19R27. We've already, sorry about that, Chris.
Nah, it's my fault.
My agenda here looks like a coach's football plays.
That's what I told them. This is a reimbursement resolution for the traffic study that I just mentioned. The funding of the traffic study is included in the proposed 2020 CIP. The refunding resolution will allow the project to proceed using monies from the general fund until the 2020 CIP is approved. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Just one mention, the reimbursement resolution's for $260,000. The previous contract was only for $58,000. It would get us into the next phase of preliminary engineering in case for any reason the 2020 CIP is delayed.
Any questions?
So, we're voting on item 11. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the resolution.
19R27. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
All right, now, well, now, is there, have you got another one you need to do?
I can wait. Final change order.
Which one do you have? Oh, the, well, might as well. Final change order for Northfield Boulevard Extension Phase One. We can't have you all getting up and down, you know? Y'all may pull a muscle or something.
Thank you, sir. This has been eventful, it's good.
It's a good change order, so it's good news. This is final change order to reflect actual work performed in a final contract amount for the Northfield Boulevard Extension Project Phase One. The project consisted of construction of a new road connecting Garrison Drive to Thompson Lane. Rosso was a low bidder and was awarded the contract in October of 2018. During the construction, it was determined that the project required less quantities of several items. We've got a detailed list of those. It's included in the attached change order. It decreases the project amount by $91,232. We have opened the road for traffic, and I drove onto it today. Looks to be in very good, very good order. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I drove on it as well today. It's a very attractive road. It's a nice surface, and it's well-designed. The curve there's not extremely aggressive or anything going into the intersection, so I think it's a really nice road, and it's nice to come in under budget. So, I'll move for approval of the final change order.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Tenell, can we make sure when we make the agenda moving forward, if Mr. Griffith has anything on the agenda, let's just go ahead and put him at 1A, 1B, and 1C. Go ahead and make sure.
All right. We can do that.
Okay, and it's my understanding on financial operating dashboard that you wanna defer that tonight?
I can, if you'd like to, but I'm very willing to go ahead with that.
We have the financial and operating dashboard July through September.
Okay, so, the information presented tonight is a high-level overview of the general fund as it stands through September. We also are including relevant data on building and codes and road construction. So, you'll see comparative information displayed graphically for the major revenues and expenses, and then for purposes of the dashboard, my primary focus was on comparing FY19 to FY20. This will include a breakdown of monthly budget versus actual results for the year, and also show where we stand overall this year compared to last year. If there's any information not presented that y'all'd like to see, just let me know, and I'll be happy to include that in future reports as well. City Schools also has included some information, and they'll present that separately after my report. Okay, so, our top revenue source is property taxes, which make up 32% of the total revenues. Tax notices were mailed in October, and the tax roll came in right around $59 million, which was right in line with our budget. Local option sales tax is the next highest revenue source, and it's coming in about 3% above budget and about 4% above last year's collections through September. So, the bar graphs here show, on the left column, the dark green, is our FY monthly, or our budgeted amount for FY20 for each month, and then on the right column, that's the actuals. You'll see cumulative information on the line chart part, and for local option sales tax, they're so similar between FY19 and FY20, they basically overlap here. On the state sales tax, we're also running about 3% above budget, but about 9% higher than last year, and so you can see here on the, on the line, the darker pink is FY20 versus the FY19 in the lighter purple. You can see that discrepancy there, or the increase there. We'll take a look at the various state share taxes. So, sales tax makes up the majority of state share tax, or collections, followed closely by State Street Aid Gas Tax, which, that's restricted to road improvements, and then business license tax and mixed drink tax make up the majority of those collections. As y'all know, the hotel motel tax rate doubled this year from 2.5% to 5%, and so far, collections through September are meeting budget and are in line with last year's reported receipts. And you can see, you know, on this blue line here where we're really shooting up on our cumulative compared to last year because of that increase. Now, we'll just take a look at the major general fund expenses. Salaries and benefits make up 46% of general fund's budget. At the end of September, we're trending slightly under budget, which is mainly due to vacancies through the year, and you can see on that green line there where, you know, as we would expect, FY20 is trending over FY19's cumulative totals. The budgeted schools transfer is 4% of general fund's budget, and this increased by $1.3 million from last year to this year, and you can see that upward trend on the yellow line here compared to the blue line for FY19. This transfer is made in monthly increments and are evenly distributed throughout the The debt service transfer accounts for 22% of the budget, and so far, our transfers are right in line with what we spent last year through this time of year, and these transfers are also made monthly as principal and interest payments come due. Repairs and maintenance make up 7% of our expenses, and they include everything from annual maintenance and renewal of software licenses to fleet services, police maintenance for things like radios and their mobile data terminals, and also the State Street Aid maintenance of the streets, markings, and right-of-way are included in this category. And these expenses fluctuate depending on the timing of contracts and repairs, which, you know, is quite normal for this time of year where we're trending compared to last Utilities were budgeted to stay relatively flat this year, and these costs make up about 3% of the budget, and we're staying right in line through September as well compared to last year. Fixed assets make up 8% of our budget, and so far, we've only spent about 4% of the fixed assets. four percent of the fixed assets budget through September. Again, we're, we're very much comparable to FY nineteen, and a big chunk of the fixed asset expense are the grant-funded road costs out of the infrastructure department. They make up eleven million of the fifteen million in fixed assets budgeted. So that concludes the financial portion. Do y'all have any questions about that before I move on to building and codes?
Only thing that stuck out to me was the sales tax.
Okay.
See, it was up nine percent.
On the state shared, yes, and that's largely due, I think, to the timing of the special census results and when that went into effect with the state.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Okay, so I'll go into the building and codes information. We're looking here, and this chart here shows the new dwelling unit permits as compared to last year. So last year's line is this green line, and then you can see this year's line is the blue line. We are down just a bit. There's a larger discrepancy between July and August compared to last year, but we started to close that gap by the end of September. We're still showing at the end of September an eight percent decrease in these permits as compared to last year. While residential permits are down, total permits have increased by almost two percent through September as compared to last year, and again, you can see where we were more often in July and August, but then in September, we surpassed last year's numbers. Total building and code revenues have also decreased around six and a half percent overall through September as compared to last year. And we'll look at road construction briefly. So you should have received a project tracking sheet and a summary of each project status in your report, and this is just a look at the project tracking sheet and the major road projects going on there, and those include Cherry Lane, Jones Boulevard, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Northfield, Rucker Lane Widening, and the Greenway Phase Four. These projects are ongoing and will be updated with each report, and I can go through what the status was at the end of September, but that's largely changed since then. And then Chris Griffith is also here if you have any questions about that. If there are no other questions, I think we're ready to let Gary Anderson come up and talk about the city school space.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, City Schools does the same sort of thing that you just heard there. We deal with cash flow issues as well, based on when we get property tax money and when we get sales tax money for holidays. I don't know what you're looking at, it's your, in your packet there at this point. If you have, is that the one that's, that they're looking at now?
We've got one that says reviewing growth and decrease in workforce.
Uh, that's, well, this is Darren's presentation.
Oh, okay. Then your presentation may not be loaded.
Is it loaded? Did you, did you send it?
No, I thought they had it in their packet, so I didn't see.
Oh, okay.
It's in there, it's in their agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just on...
The chart that shows, the thin black line shows our cash position each time, and you can see that we actually have times when we are really struggling to make sure that we have the revenues on hand and the fund balance to make sure we cover our cash needs, and we really start to have a healthier account when we hit the holiday sales and the, and through the property tax collections. Every month, the school board gets the report that shows what we've done for the, for the previous month. It shows what our income and expenses are, and it's broken down by category. Through September, our sales tax collections were up about a hundred and seven thousand dollars over the previous year. Typically, the county sales tax collections runs a little lower than the city do, does, so we get a little less than the city would take in as far as a percentage basis, but we, we track this when we give them last year and current year data on revenue and expenditures, and so they are, they are kept well aware of where we are at each time. Our budget, our general purpose operating budget is at eighty-eight million dollars, so it's quite, quite a, a large amount that we work through each year. If you have any questions about how we do it, we can give you much more detail. We do much more detail in our office. I look at the cash amounts every week, and we look at our operating expenses and revenues every, every month when we present it to the board. Will I answer any questions anyone has on how, how we handle this?
Questions for Mr. Anderson.
Alright, thank you.
So if I, if I could, Mayor, this is presented for information. Were you done? Did you have more?
I'm done.
Okay. So our thought is that we provide this type of information each month at the Wednesday workshop session, and not necessarily do a presentation, but if council has any questions on it, then we can certainly take those, those questions up at that point in time, but wanted to provide this on a monthly ongoing basis. Any suggestions, any more information, any more graphing or charting that you'd like to see from the city's financial side, let us know.
Ms. Tucker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, well now move to item fifteen, Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant Award, Fire and Rescue. Chief Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a, for a, this grant is for a rescue boat and tra, accompanying trailer. This is actually the third grant that we've received from Firehouse Subs in recent years. We've also received another boat and trailer several years ago, as well as a Kubota with a med bed option on it that we now use on the Greenway and the golf course from Station Four over on Medical Center Parkway. The grant is for twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for the purchase of a boat. The only difference in this and our other boat that we had purchased in the past on some of our deployments, we found out that when floodwater gets to just above the fence lines and above mailboxes, that a rubber-bottom boat or a Zodiac-type boat doesn't work that well, so we're buying an aluminum hull boat this time with this grant funding, and it's gonna aid us much, both in our community as well as on deployments to help other communities that we would go to. This also includes the accompanying, you will have a future budget amendment with the expense and the revenue, accompanying revenue for the grant. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief? Say thank you to Firehouse Subs.
Yes, and I, Mark Watson apologizes, he's the owner of Firehouse Subs here. He couldn't be here tonight, he was gonna try to be, but he called me on the way here and was not able to attend, but he's the owner of the franchise here in Murfreesboro, which is getting ready to be the second location over on Memorial Boulevard, so he expressed, he was very elated that the foundation awarded our department the grant and very excited for us.
We're very thankful.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
We do.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Second. Motion second. Mr. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Alright, we'll move to addendum to MTSU contract C fifteen zero zero three seven, partial recreation.
Evening, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before using addendum to our contract with MTSU ads that pertains to the Adams Tennis Complex, this addendum will serve as a donation agreement for sixty thousand dollars. MTSU would like to install the PlaySite Smart Court Tennis System. This, the, the proposal in front of you includes six courts with two cameras in each court. PlaySite is something we've been evaluating for some time at the facility. If you're not familiar with it, it provides off-site streaming, enhanced teaching opportunities, and it provides for replay opportunities for tennis matches at all levels, so it'll provide a tremendous asset to us when we start bidding for regional and national tournaments as they all look for this type of software within facilities. It will be used by MTSU's men's and women's tennis teams as, as well as our department. The total cost is fifty-five thousand dollars for the equipment, sixty, I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand dollars for the equipment and ten thousand dollars for installation. We've agreed to pay half of the installation cost, and we can pay that out of our operating budget, so we consider this a generous gift from MTSU and recommending your approval of this addendum.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Nate, I would ask that maybe in the first of the year, I think it'd be good, I know we don't have the tennis commission anymore now that we've really got the, the center established, but I think it'd be good to come and give us an update on where we are at the, the ATC, maybe talk about use, how many memberships you have, and I think it'd be a good time when you do that to, to go back over the funding structure on how much was donated by outside entities to be able to build that facility and the partnership that went through. I think sometimes when you, people talk about the facility, they forget that how much money that was raised to be able to build that. That was just not built by the city.
Yeah, we'll be glad to. We'll bring up the first of the year. A good report for you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we have Brush Limb and Yard Waste Bid Recommendation and Associated City-Owned Knuckle Boom Truck Sale. Lot of resources.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you again. Wanted to review something that we had looked at back at the September workshop regarding Brush Limb curbside and the yard waste curbside pickup. Just to kind of reinforce the necessity of this, the graph before you kind of shows that in the last ten years, we've experienced about thirty-six percent population growth. The city limits have increased by about twelve percent, and the solid waste staff has decreased around twenty-five percent. So the level of service has not been what we wanted it to be, and so we presented three options before the council. One was to utilize existing staff in significant overtime, which was around seven hundred thousand dollars. If we wanted to staff back up to two thousand and nine level, that was gonna be about one point one three million, and then option three was to subcontract services to a private contractor to help pick up about fifty percent of the city. I think it's actually sixty percent of the city, and that was one point one five million dollars, and that's the, at the workshop, that was the direction that council stated you, was your preferred option. So in order to make that happen, we did have to put out an invitation to bid to sell three knuckle boom trucks, which were surplus. We just didn't have the drivers to man those. So this table, the last table here on the, on the three slide slideshow, we're looking at selling those three knuckle booms for a hundred and fourteen thousand, six months, which is the, starting in January, half of the physical year for curbside collection service would be five hundred and seventy-six thousand. Additional revenue, we're, we're up a little bit on our solid waste fee, a hundred and thirty thousand anticipated at year-end, and then rebuilding of a working spare knuckle boom truck that we do have. We just need to get the engine and articulating arm rebuilt at ninety thousand. So this is a added revenue of two hundred and forty-four thousand, added expense of six hundred and sixty-six thousand for a net total add of, of expenses of four hundred and twenty-two thousand. We would anticipate, if you approve this bid, getting the contractor, which would be Rollins Excavating, to be up and ready by the first of the year and be able to aid us during the heavier season in March.
I, I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So we're selling three trucks for a hundred and fourteen.
Correct.
So roughly forty, roughly...
Thirty-six thousand each.
But then it costs ninety to repair the one that we have that doesn't work? I'm trying to...
Yes, this is a rebuild, well, that's, that's from Joey, so I'm taking his word on it, that it's a rebuild of the actual engine itself and a rebuild of the, the full articulating arm. It's a two-man truck, so it's a little different. The ones we're selling are two thousand and four trucks that are really, honestly, you probably could, I mean, twenty-five thousand is about probably what they're praised for. They're, they're pretty, they're, they're, they were well-maintained, but they have been...
They're old.
They've been used very, very much. That ninety thousand is hopefully a high number, too. I mean, I'm, I probably should have investigated that a little bit more, but that is the number that Joey gave.
Is it a newer truck?
No, it's just a rebu, uh, I don't know.
I guess what he's asking is maybe we ought to keep one of the thirty-six thousand dollar trucks and scrap the ninety.
Yeah, I, I agree. This number didn't jump out at me like it does now, but you're right. The rebuilding of that working spare knuckle boom, um, that's high.
Let's check it out. I mean, let's figure out, we'll figure out a way to talk about it once you guys had...
I'll get more information on it. That was, again, that was me just trying to pull the numbers together and what I got from Joey, so let me, I should have done a little more digging on that.
Well, I, I had a, a question that was, that might, might help this, but the, the sale of the three trucks, aside from what they, what the value is or what, you know, the, the other one is to repair.
Right.
Is that a, a critical factor in the, the, the outside company being able to...
Yes.
Take care of?
It is.
I, you know, I'm, I'm, okay, I mean, I'm a little hesitant to, to get rid of them in case we ever do get staff back up and all that kind of stuff. That, that's, I guess, where I was going with that, but...
Well, one of the options that we, so to, this is just me speaking freely, the, this is a one-year contract with the op, option to extend annually for two more years, so a full three-year contract. So what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be determining the efficiency and effectiveness of our crews versus the subcontracted crews. Now, at the end of that three-year period, I've, I've talked with legal about writing in a buyback clause, that if it, if we demonstrate that the staff and our, and our resources are more efficiently and effectively working it, and we do get staffed back up, that we would have the opportunity to buy back these...
Good.
These knuckle booms.
That's what I had in mind. Perfect. Yep. Outstanding. So do we need, we do need a motion on this, and how can we formulate a, can I, how, how can I make a motion to just allow, still allow for staff comments or whatever as it relates to the, the ninety thousand dollars, or if it...
I, I, I think that the, this, this calculation here with the ninety thousand for, the ninety thousand is not up for approval. I think it, basically, you just have to approve the sale and the award of the contract. I think he, Darren was just showing the whole operation.
This, this is when, and the re, and the re, I think the rebudgeting ordinance, we've got it in there as a budget item to rebuild the truck. If it comes in under that, that's just a budget number. Mr. Gr...
We can adjust the budget ordinance next week, too, if we find that that number is a little high.
How about this, let's go...
Do you really, do you really want to sell the trucks if you find out that one of them is, what are we selling for, thirty-six thousand something, roughly? I mean, are you gonna sell a truck for thirty-six thousand and turn around and spend ninety thousand dollars if he says it is ninety thousand dollars? Are you really gonna do that?
Well, it may be a much newer truck, and I need, I need to give you more information, and, and I need to get more detail, so I apologize for not having that tonight, but, but...
Would it kill it if we deferred this for a couple weeks? I know we're not meeting next week.
I was just gonna make a general comment. If we're talking about a one-year, year-over-year type deal with the ability to buy back, why wouldn't we just lease the truck? Why are we gonna sell the truck?
There are insurance issues.
There you go. Fair enough.
Are there two separate motions needed for this? One for the contract, one for the...
That would be the cleanest way to do it, yeah.
So why don't we vote on the contract, and we'll defer the vote on the sale on the trucks? But I think they're...
The contract is contingent on being by these trucks.
Let's just defer it.
We can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Uh, let's defer it until... Do we need a motion to defer it? I don't even think we need a motion to defer this, 'cause it's not a, not an ordinance. So we're, let's push this till it won't be next week, but the next week.
Very good. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks. Alright, any, like, well, we do have a lot of beer permits tonight.
Well, we, we do have the budget ordinance.
We had the budget ordinance, which included the item that Darren just had. It also includes the boat that we were gonna purchase for sub-house grant, and I don't know if it can wait or not.
Did I miss that on our...
That's when they moved nine.
It's part of the, it's part of that.
Yeah, I got it right here. I got an arrow moving.
Can it wait?
So how, can we...
He said it can wait, too, so, well, let's just defer that ordinance as well.
Okay, so number nine, that's down at seventeen C, will be, will be deferred, too. Craig, I'm not letting you ever touch my agenda again. There's so many lines on here. Yeah, I feel like I'm third and one, and I just kicked a field goal on third and one on the goal line, so, alright, we have licensing.
Yes, Mayor, we have a special event permit tonight for the Chamber of Commerce for their networking events for 2020, and there are applications in order, and if you approve that, we will issue those, so that, starting in January, they can have beer at their events.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. One recommendation on the Cable TV Commission, the appointment of Jason Eric Schmidt, filling the vacancy left by Brian Patterson. Brian is wanting to do something. He served on the Cable Commission, is wanting to try to find something else to work on. So we're waiting to see if something is open. Jason Schmidt, I believe Ronnie has met with him, Mr. Boson's met with him, and he is the new general manager of Old Time Pottery.
CEO.
CEO of Old Time Pottery. So just moved here and reached out, wanting to get active. So if you're watching and you want to get active, send an email to us, and there's all kinds of board and commission appointments that come open over time. So we have that one ready to appoint.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, now we have...
We have statements.
Yes, the statements. We have funds that we need to pay to the Rutherford County CBB for the TWAA soccers.
This is in accordance with the agreement we made with them.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Motion second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business? Any other statements? Do you have any other business? All right. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope we're not going to be meeting next Thursday night, I would assume.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you all for your hard work, and we will stand adjourned.